My name is Barbara McAdade and I am the leadership team of the Bangor League of Women Voters. We are a nonpartisan organization that tries to do three things. We try to educate people on how government works and what the election issues are. We also help people get registered to vote. We work at the national, we go to the nationalization ceremonies of popping new people into our country. We also study issues and when we come to statewide consensus, we then advocate for those issues. The League never supports a political party or a political candidate. We do however due issues. The forum tonight will be available and it's being recorded by Jermaine Whitney and thank you very much for doing that. And will be available on the Bangor League of Women Voters website tomorrow. It will be available through Election Day. I want to thank the candidates very much for taking their time and for their interest and in the community and in finding out the issues and being willing to work to come to have a good government that comes to real solutions. So thank you very much for taking your time to do that. Want to thank Dick Farm for inviting me to come and have a nonpartisan forum and for doing a lot of work to make sure that things got done. Generally, we work with another sponsor like a library or a town hall. And we did work a little bit with the town here and with the high school. And I appreciate the high school for their help too very much. All questions from the public must be in writing. And there are index cards around the auditorium. And when you have a question, please bring it up to me and I will get to it if I can. We already have a large pile of questions. So I'm very impressed with how involved the citizens are in this forum. What else should I be telling you? I can't think. We do have, yes, every question will be timed and Deb is our timer. They, each candidate will get two minutes for an okay statement, two minutes for a prepared question. They were given a question ahead of time and then they'll get two minutes to answer that. And then they can get one minute to answer each audience's question. If a question is addressed just to one candidate, all the candidates will get a chance to mark on that subject. The candidates drew in advance to know what order we will start in. And then I will juggle people around so that nobody is always first or last. And I agree with that, we will start. And number one is Tony Reynolds. Tony, can you give us your opinion?
Yeah, most of the time when you're drawing number one, it's a good thing. But tonight it might not be that. So I've lived in Herman all my life. I've got a couple of grandkids that go to the schools now. My daughter teaches there also. I want the kids in Herman to get a great education. I even consider Carmel and Van kids Herman kids as far as I'm concerned. Always have since I've been on the board. I've served on the board and I've served on the town council. So I do have a little bit of experience. I may have the old ways because my class is graduating this year 50th year. So that tells her anything. But I'm here to, if I get elected, to do the best thing I can for the kids. And also I'd like to make sure we protect the teachers and the administrators. I think that's very important. They went through COVID for us and I think we owe it to them to do the best we can.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Greg Newell.
Hello, I'm Greg Newell. Herman resident since 2021. And me and my wife have two kids in the middle school. I'm a retired combat veteran of the Army. I have 22 years of active duty service. I was in the military intelligence field. I worked in primarily technology maintenance. The last five years of my career, I was an instructor, course rider, and technical rider. I grew up down in Southern Maine and me and my family have been all over the country. I've traveled all over the world for the Army. We, when we came back, we wanted to come back to Maine and we found Herman and we fell in love with it. I'm actively involved in the schools. I've assisted the IT department with their 20 years worth of old hardware, helping that game that organized and put, so they could turn it in. I'm part of the middle school parent advisory council or as a treasurer, where I've done that for several years now. We do lots of activities in the middle school and for the kids and the teachers. I have also substituted in all three schools. I have, excuse me. I've taught K through 12, the music, P E R. I've helped, subbed in the resource rooms and special education. I've also been part of the school committee's technology subcommittee. And I really love being in part of the school and the community. And I'm looking now to take the next step and hopefully be part of the school committee. Thank you.
Regina Leather.
Hi there, I'm Regina Leather. And I've lived in Herman for 19 years with my husband and I have two children. My older son went through all three of the school tiers and now is part of the military. And my son Cooper will be in high school next year. I moved here for a reason. I love this town. I was part of the group that helped get the football program running and up off the ground. And I'm so proud to see how far that's come, especially recently with the turf field. Myself and another mother started the tailgate competition, the cheerleading competition that you see. And it warms my heart to see how big that's gotten and how it unites our town. I've been a business owner for 15 years. And I also was a national educator for a global company where I traveled over the country helping professionals that wanted to improve their career by gaining new skills. I recently graduated college and have started a new career to kind of simplify my life to give me more time with my family. As you all know, COVID was hard on businesses and I just decided it was time to simplify my life a little bit. I was a 4H kid from the age of five until 18. A lot of people think 4H is just farming, but really it's about community service and leadership and public speaking skills. I served on our board there in all areas from treasurer to president. I was chosen many times to represent my academy at the state level for my leadership and public speaking skills that really molded who I am. And I'm very proud of my accomplishments in 4H. I chose to run because I've been involved the last three years speaking out to issues and for those people that don't feel comfortable to speak. And I've just seen that our process is broken and it's time to fix it. And I decided I would run so that I could facilitate and help us come together and communicate so we can move forward. Thank you.
And Stephanie Oiler.
My name is Stephanie Oiler. I'm the current chair of the Herman School Committee. And I'm proud to have that role because what our Herman school needs is someone with great leadership skills. I have proven leadership skills 21 years in the financial services industry, vice president for two local banks. I recently was a 2024 graduate of the Bangor Regional Leadership Institute. I was 2024 Friends of Education Award, of which my daughter went on stage and accepted for me, which made me so proud. I have proven leadership within our community and that's important for our community. Stability is really, really going to be key. Making sure that you have the ability to solve problems. Support administration, teachers, children, and parents. Our town needs that stability. They need someone with proven leadership to be able to continue to move us forward. I thought, why am I even sitting here? Why did I even involve myself in the school committee, quite frankly? And I remember three years ago, I wasn't impressed with the education that my kids were getting in 2020, but who really was impressed with how anything went at that point. And what I taught my children was, we have two options. We can complain or we can try to be part of the solution. I proved to my kids to be part of the solution. I volunteered in my kids' classrooms since kindergarten. I wanted to be involved. I wanted the teacher to know who I am. I wanted to make an impact on other students. I brought the junior achievement program back to our town in Herman, of which I'm so proud of. Financial literacy isn't taught enough. I have taught the third grade, the fourth grade, the fifth grade, the high schoolers. It is an amazing opportunity to go in and be able to teach financial literacy. That's what leaders do. We set an example for the children in our district. I'm a proven leader and I look forward to the opportunity to continuing and moving forward. There, I'm not perfect, I will admit that. There's lots of opportunity for improvement. I'm really looking forward to taking those next steps. Thank you.
The question that every candidate received beforehand was, what do you think is the most pressing problems the students in our community face? And what do you think some viable solutions are? Is there something the schools can be doing to help? Regina, can you say?
So I think that, is it on? It is? Okay. I think that we can all agree that we want the best education for our children. I think that there are a multitude of issues that are wrong. The mental health of our children is really important. And you've seen the decline in that in the schools since COVID. I think that our test scores need to be improved. I think we need to support our teachers. And I think that I have my own personal opinion about what the issues may or may not be. But I think in order for us to actually make change and improve it, we need to communicate and work together. I'd like to see advisory committees where you have lots of different types of people and stakeholders involved. And I want to see surveys and I want to see more communication so that we can really help support the teachers. I was a hairdresser for 15 years. I have a lot of teachers that have sat in my chair. And as you know, they'll tell their hairdresser anything. And the thing that I've heard that teachers are dealing with in the classroom is really sad. And I want to see us come together and try to figure out how we can support them and so that our children are safe and that they're learning and their test scores are up and they get the best education possible. But again, I have my own opinions, but I think it's really important for us to start communicating and evolving the community and welcoming parents and everyone that wants to speak to speak without fear of retaliation. And that's the only way we're going to move forward.
Greg, can you go first?
So most pressing issues there, the list could be very long, from of course drugs and alcohol to vaping. I think one of the big things today, as Regina said, is mental health. Cyberbullying is a major problem these days. That, you know, kids feel free to say almost anything to another student over the phone because they don't have to say it to their face. I think we really need to help educate the kids on how to deal with that cyberbullying. I think that, I think school counselors is a great place for them to go to help get help. I know this school has a great, specifically this school, this high school has a great principal. He's done quite a bit. In the big scheme of things, this Mr. Walsh has done a great job with having these kids go to UTC, which is the United Technology Center, getting kids that might not want to go to college a different avenue. I know he has been instrumental in helping kids get college education here in the school. I think he's done a wonderful job. But I would agree with the candidates, we need to be a community, work with citizens, parents, administrators, teachers, and help help these students today and move them forward. Thank you.
Yeah, so I had my own ideas on what I thought it was. And social media pressure was one of them. But I did some research. I thought it was important to reach out to each administrator in the school and see what they felt the pressing issues were as well. Social media pressure obviously is a huge concern. We as adults set that standard, right? And social media, if students bullied, you know, there's consequences for their actions. Electronics is huge. Electronics is making it so that students aren't able to communicate as well, right? It's easy to put texts, but would you say that to somebody's face, right? So lower social skills, academic progress is down because of phones. Overuse of video games and technology is an issue. It impacts our reading. So what is it that PaaS is doing? They're providing additional resources for our students and reading resources. Behavioral and emotional is obviously a concern. That's why that was one of the topics that we had brought forward in the school committee meetings last year. It was important to hear from our counselors. Important to hear that we involve parents. We have outside resources that we contract with. Because good luck trying to find a resource if you're going out on your own. The fact that the staff and the administration partners together with those resources is really invaluable to our students and we're very, very lucky. Focusing on positive behavior interventions is huge, right? We can always focus on the negative, but how about if we try to turn it around by letting the kids know what they're doing, right? Not taking education seriously. Focusing on the curriculum is really going to be huge. And having a full-time curriculum coordinator and collaborating and coordinating with her is going to be key. Looking for innovative ways of teaching. The days of typing are over. Artificial intelligence is here. There's new ways of teaching. Really engaging and looking for new opportunities and ways to teach the students.
Food insecurity is one thing that wasn't mentioned, although everything else has been said. Financially, the colleges, Herman does a great job. We need to keep working on that. All the classes that you get now to put toward college certainly helps them with that aspect. Social media, one of the big ones. We could go on and on for hours on that. The other thing is when I was a kid, I never knew what I wanted to be. I never knew exactly what school I wanted to go to. That's something that we really need to look at and if there's a way to help kids, either to further their education or even the job skills that they need to continue on with.
These questions are for the audience. And each candidate will get one minute to answer them. And Greg, do you want to go first? Question is, what do you see as the top two or three strengths of Herman, the Herman School Department? And why do you see them as strengths?
Well, I really think that our principals and teachers have are a key aspect. And all three principals that we have now are amazing. They've done amazing jobs. Mr. Walsh has been here for, at the high school for over 20 years. Mr. Freeman has come in and really done a wonderful job. And I think good administration helps the teachers do their job better. Because a good administrator will take the loan off of the teachers and allow them to actually teach. And without good teachers, then our education is going to be struggling. So those are the two top ones, I think.
Stephanie.
I definitely think our administration, we are so, so fortunate to have them. Each and every one of them extends beyond the principles that we have. I think that the resilience and positive activities that we have for our kids, that's definitely huge as well. We have so many resources within our schools and so many different programs. I mean, the fact that we have college students graduating with an associate's degree is priceless. Not every school has that. The partnership with RSU 87 is huge. It allows us to be a Class A school and, not Class A, Class B school, excuse me, at the high school. The fact that we get to meet other students from RSU 87 and those become some of my kids' best friends really is priceless.
You know, I'll echo the teachers and the administrators and I don't have to go on much about that. Extracurricular activities are very, very important for all students and to shape their lives. And I gotta throw in the bus transportation because I don't want to leave the bus driver.
Regina.
So I would echo what Spencer said, especially with the administration. Having a son that's older, I've had great experiences with the leadership here and any challenges that we had. And the teachers as well, I've had great experiences with teachers. My younger son had Lyme disease and they fought so hard for him and I cannot tell you how thankful I am. I also would say our extracurricular activities and our sports programs, as a mother of two children who are heavily involved in that, I see what that does to change lives. I was an athlete in school and I just love watching our community come together for that and how amazing Herman has done in all of our sports and extracurricular activities. And yeah, I think that I can echo the rest.
Stephanie, this is our next question. Herman has a long, has had a long contractual arrangement with the towns of Carmel and Laverne. They've pitched wishing for their high school students to come to Herman High. What is your opinion of continuing this arrangement?
That's amazing. It's an over there. We are so fortunate, like I just mentioned, to have RSU 87 in our district. The fact that all their students come, I mean, you should all know the class of 2024 valedictorian is from RSU 87. That says a lot. I think it provides our kids such an opportunity to be able to meet additional students. And I think that that partnership is huge and should definitely be something that's continued. They provide a lot of dollars. They send a lot of students into our district and we are very, very fortunate to have them. And I'm very fortunate for the expertise that we have on the school committee from their members as well.
Greg, do you want to, do you want to go first?
Absolutely.
Okay. Do you want to go next and would you like me to repeat the question?
No, I remember it. Thank you. So RSU 87, I think their students are an asset. What determines whether they come here or not is really not up to the Herman school committee. It's up to their town on whether they want to continue to send their students here. They'll be more than welcome to come if they decide to continue that. Again, that's a contract basis between RSU 87 and the Herman School Department. So I, I think it's a great asset. But again, that's not up for the Herman school committee to tell RSU 87 what to do and where to go. So, but they'll always be welcome here. Thank you.
Thank you. Tony, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, that's okay. That's fine. I was involved in contract negotiation with then SAB 23 and it was a 10-year contract. And when we went through those negotiations, it was very important that we had SAB 23, now RSU 87, because Herman, even back then, didn't want to be a Class D school. We've done a lot. I think people are forgetting, we've built a new track now. We have a football team now. It would be pretty sad to have to fire half of our teachers and go back to a Class D school.
I fully support them coming here. I went to a really small school, the Airline Community School. There were five in the eighth grade. And we, we were able to have a school choice. But I know what that meant to me to be able to go to a Class A school and make amazing friendships. And I think that that was really valuable to my education and my growth as a person. But like Greg said, that is really not up to Herman. That is up to, you know, what they want to do. And if they, if they decided they wanted to have school choice, you know, that would be up to them. But I absolutely support and welcome them and I think it's wonderful.
Tony. Can you inform the community of three positive steps the school department made this year regarding the IT issue?
Well, they hired a new IT director, I guess that's a positive step. Really not familiar with everything else. I've, I've met the person and said hi to them, but haven't sat down and talked with them while being on the school board. So I really don't know a lot more than that. I know they went through a process where they hired an outfit to come in and help them when the school got hacked. And that seemed to be taken care of properly. And other than that, I think they do a great job. Like I said, I've got a daughter that's a teacher and I don't get complaints from her. So that must be a good thing.
Stephanie.
Hands down, the technology director has been huge. The tech committee meets monthly. That allows the opportunity for the public to be able to comment and comment. That is amazing as well. Each month, the tech committee and the director has the opportunity to be able to collaborate. I know that there's been a lot of improvements that Alex has made and I'm so proud of all of that. I know there's also a lot of misinformation that's been conveyed. I think it's important that the students do have access to the internet. Is there an isolated issue right now in the middle school that Alex is working on? Absolutely. But to say that we don't have internet and our teachers don't have the resources is inaccurate. So I'm proud of all that he's continued to accomplish.
Yes, so three positive steps for IT. I think IT has had a very difficult time over the past year, especially with the FCC investigation on it. They, Mr. Bridges has made some good improvements. I'm really glad on his choice to go to Chromebooks. That's something that a lot of the schools in the district uses. Chromebooks are quite amazing to where the teacher can actually look at what their students are doing on their screens. It's, the technology today is really an integral part of teaching. I think he has done a good job with trying to fix the wireless and the internet and finally getting off the $4,000 a month IT bill and going to the main system is a good, a great step forward. Thank you.
Regina.
So IT is not my specialty, but I would echo that having a new director and I was going to say saving us $4,000 a month for internet is a great positive step forward. I think that it's yet to be seen where we move, but I hope it's in the right direction. And yeah, that's all. Thank you.
Stephanie, is there a policy or issue that is most important to you?
Thinking about that one because I think that they're all important. But there's one that's currently being brought forward that I think is very, very important. Because as I mentioned, our students have a code of conduct and we have a level that we expect them to perform. I think it's important for the school committee to be able to set up an example and especially go out forward for all of us, all of us looking in the mirror, to follow a code of ethics. Accountability is huge. We, it's us after us as adults. We've got to be role models for our students. So the code of ethics is something that is being brought forward right now. And I do believe it's called, it's just simply called accountability.
Regina.
I think just in general, we do have a lot of policies. I think we need to look a bit closer at them. I definitely agree that there should be some accountability, but I do not ever believe in trying to silence people or take away their First Amendment rights. And all voices need to be heard and welcomed. And yes, you should be held accountable and you should be able to lead and unite. And I just think that no matter what we do moving forward, it needs to involve everyone and their voices. The retaliation and the clapping, that needs to stop. And that needs to come out in policy, great. But we need to be open and we need to communicate and we need to welcome people to speak.
Tony?
Yeah, I was never on the policy committee when I was on the school board. That was Ralph Carr and Divvy Qualles's job. But I did read them all and I did vote on them all. I think the most important policy that they have now is the books in the library. Brian has explained it to me. I'm sure I didn't get all of it, but it certainly sounded like a very fair policy. And I think that's probably the most important one that they have now.
So narrowing it down to one policy, I would say would be difficult because currently there is 239 policies that this committee has and over 595 pages of them. So I've read most of them and I probably forgot half of them also because they're so lengthy. So narrowing it down to one of those would be really difficult. I think policy in general should be straightforward, concise, get to the point. When you have 239 policies, that is really difficult for students, teachers, administrators to follow. And I think we need to do a better job at doing those and also being rid of the 30-year-old policies. Thank you.
Thank you. Tony, let's start the queue. Both the school committee and town council have codes of ethics that prohibit members from making disparaging remarks about other members or their opinions. If you are elected, how do you honor that aspect of the code of ethics? Also, what should be done if a member repeatedly violates the code of ethics by making public posts on social media about another member and his or her opinion?
Wow, tough question. That's tough. First of all, I would follow the policies. I know them somewhat, but I certainly would have to brush up on them. But saying bad stuff doesn't get you anywhere. If you can't work together, you'll never get anything done.
Sure, Stephanie?
I think that those are critical for us moving forward. We've all seen these not followed over the last year. It's unfortunate. The secret groups need to stop. We talk about transparency, blocking people on Facebook so that they can't see comments. That's not okay. Again, it goes back to if our students display this behavior, the parents, we as parents, would be right in there with the administrators and we would be wanting those students to be held accountable. It's time as adults that there's some accountability also. I don't know what that looks like. What I envision, and it came from the policy committee, let's get an outside legal opinion for that. Let's get something beyond MSA, beyond our attorney. Let's see what they have to say about that. But really, we as town, you know, town council, committee members, we need to be setting the stage for our students. Because again, the first time that happened to our children, we would be right in there in that principal's office wanting accountability.
Thank you. Great.
So this is, for me, this is a, I would hate to say a difficult topic because as a soldier, I fought for people's ability to have the freedom to speak and speak their opinion. So someone would have to really define out what disparaging is. If someone says, hey, I saw it differently, is that disparaging? I don't know. I think that's, social media makes that a really difficult thing to answer. Here's the problem, is we live in America, people have free speech. What someone does in their personal time and what they do as a committee member are two separate things. And to say that you do not say anything bad, whether you're on the committee or off the committee, that's, that's a really tough thing for me to swallow. Thank you.
Thank you. Regina?
Yeah, I would agree that, yes, if you're on the town council and a school member, you should be held to a higher standard, but again, you know, define disparaging and what that really means. You know, if you're being open and honest and transparent, I think a lot of that would solve many of the issues that are going on. But again, you still have your rights and your freedoms to speak openly and honestly. Yes, you're a council member or a school committee member, but you're also a parent and a taxpayer. And I will never vote for anything that's gonna stop anyone's right to speak or be heard. And no, you should not be blocking people so they can't see your comments on Facebook. I also don't think you should be deleting them if you don't like what they have to say.
Greg, let's start the queue. What is the direction of student enrollment levels and why?
So this is, for our school department, a complex answer. Your elementary school, all those students come from Herman, same with middle school. When you get to the high school, now you bring in Levant and Carmel. So for example, if Herman becomes too expensive or Bangor comes too expensive, lift, people are gonna move further out, they're gonna move into Carmel-Levant. That's gonna then affect student enrollment here. If Carmel, RSU 87 goes to school choice, that's going to affect the enrollment here at the school also. I think the quality of education affects where people go and also what after-school activities, sports or other, like drama or those activities also affect what, where students go. Thank you.
Stephanie?
That's something that we've been continuing to monitor over the last three years for sure. Analyzing ratios and especially PADS is crucial, right? So we've had to add additional teachers because of that and keep a very reasonable budget. We haven't seen great increases, right? I know at the high school, if we didn't send students to UTC and have them have the ability to do online college, our high school could potentially be overfilled. So the fact that we send students to UTC is huge. I think it also needs to be looked at as collaboration at the town level. How many buildings are we issuing? How many developments are we growing, right? Because everybody wants to move to Herman because of those lower tax rates, but that's creating, not issues, but we have to be aware of that. And that's why I think it's been important to be able to analyze those enrollment levels. So definitely analyzing the ratios of students to teachers has been crucial over the last several years. So we've added teachers because of it.
One of the things that I really would like us to look more into is that our enrollment is down. And we heard Mr. Walsh at a meeting say that it was concerning, that it was the biggest drop since 2006. I would like to know why. Is it because they're moving out of town? Is it because they're homeschooling and they're pulling their kids to go to private Christian schools? I'd like us to know why so we can address those issues and we can improve upon them. I think it's really important. And at the same time, you know, we've got the elementary school that's growing and the numbers are getting bigger because of everyone moving into town and building. Then we need to be looking at what does that look like when they get to high school? And what does classroom size look like? Is the high school gonna be big enough to hold all the students? And again, like he said, if RSU goes to school choice, that will affect enrollment. There's a lot of factors. I think we need to look at it a little bit closer.
Yes, I've been saying for years that the best solution that Herman could do is to buy some land near the elementary school, build a fourth and fifth grade school or a third through fifth, whatever. That way you could bring the middle school enrollment down. By now the fifth grade goes here, they could go back to this school. And then you could alleviate the problem of overcrowding in the elementary school. But we haven't even bought the land yet, so that's a situation in Herman. But we really should as a town look for some land and build a very small, at least two-grade school.
Thank you. This is a follow-up for, for a question from before. So as Greg and Regina, Greg, let's start the queue. Can you clarify, will you follow the code of ethics regarding not disparaging other members and/or their opinions?
Yes, I will follow that rule. But again, it goes back to the definition of disparaging. If someone says something and I disagree with them, I lay out documents, for example, from the school on, hey, the school network is really safe. And I present a document from the review that the superintendent did that says we have a ton of issues. Is that disparaging in my, my making the other person look bad because I showed them that they were giving incorrect facts? So again, I will follow the rules. In the military, I had very defined, set rules for conduct and what I could do, I couldn't do. So I will have no problem at all.
Regina?
There is a current code of ethics and yes, absolutely I will follow it. But again, it goes back to you need to define disparaging. And I will keep reiterating that your First Amendment right is important and your right to speak is important. Yes, you need to hold yourself to a higher standard, but it doesn't take away your rights as an American citizen. And this goes back to us starting to communicate and starting to listen to each other. I think we agree a lot more than we realize if we would just start listening. And I think that social media is a useful tool and I think it has been great for us to put information out there. But none of this would have to happen if we were being honest and transparent and giving the taxpayers and parents the right to speak without fear of retaliation. So yes, I will follow the current code of ethics.
Thank you. Stephanie, would you like to comment?
I have not too much really to comment because it's obvious I follow the code of conduct with the ethics. I am running a very positive campaign. There's been a lot out there. And I appreciate people's opinions. People's opinions of me really don't matter. But at the end of the day, we only control ourselves. So why is it that we have to have this "I got you" mentality on social media? Collaboration would mean, I pick up the phone and I say, hey, hey, Tony, you know, you, you made this mistake. Nobody's perfect. And so why can't we, why do we have to have somebody read something on social media and then have to defend their actions? There's a lot of inaccurate information being put out there and I would ask why? How is that benefiting our district?
Do you want me to answer to you?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I said before I would look at the code of ethics. But another thing is, some people think that if you don't agree with them, you're not listening. And I'm not, certainly not saying this is bad about anybody. But sometimes people just don't agree. It doesn't matter how much you talk to them, it doesn't matter how much you give your opinion and back up all your, your casework or whatever you've got, they just don't agree with you. So you have to learn to move on after that. Hopefully, at least a majority of the board will agree one way or the other. Or you're just gonna sit there and stay on me.
Regina, we have several questions and I'll try to put them all together. What, what do you think about the lack of physical activity options in the middle school? Gym, only two months of a year and no outdoor athletic facilities for recess or breaks. But also going in, what is the importance of athletics and extracurricular activities?
So that's the first that I am hearing of that at the middle school, but I definitely support and encourage physical activities. As I stated earlier, I was an athlete in school. And even beyond that, I was on the track team in school and that's a sport that stayed with me my entire life. And that led to me becoming a marathon runner. And I see what it does for my children. When my older son went to basic training, he told me he got the basic training because of what Coach Glenn taught him in football. And these skills that kids get from extracurricular activities, it doesn't have to just be sports. That's music or art. My son Cooper is pretty excited about this esport. I think anything to get kids involved is what really molds and shapes them for their future.
Stephanie?
Extracurricular activities are really key. It's an opportunity for students to be able to get friends, collaborate. And in fact, you know, even this week, we do listen to parents and we had a concern about parents reaching out. Why are middle school sports not in the playoff leagues? Great question. Let's follow the appropriate channels and then let's reach out to the athletic director and find out why. And to, because some of our neighbors, they are in playoff leagues. Well, the reason is, is because the league that we're in allows an opportunity for more games. But so we do listen to the parents and we do explore and see, why is it? And this is a perfect example of the middle school extracurriculars. So extracurricular activities are key and absolutely crucial. I'd love to see even more activities.
Tony?
Yeah, I'm sure it's got something to do maybe financially too. Anytime you have to hire extra referees or extra coaches and stuff like that. But I'm all for sports, as everybody knows. And I would do whatever I could to make sure the kids get out and do whatever they can with activity.
Could you, I think I heard the question correctly, but could you say it one more time?
What do you think about the lack of physical activity options in the middle school? Gym, only two months a year and no outdoor athletic fields for recess or breaks. And what is the importance of athletics and extracurricular activities in school engagement and performance?
So this, this is obviously a very multifaceted question. So one, I'm not sure a lot of people know, but the fifth grade is still considered elementary school. So they do get recess. At sixth and seventh, and sixth, seventh and eighth grade, they are no longer get recess. Now, I know Mr. Freeman and the teachers have worked to try, try to get the students out during study hall to get them walking around the school, to get some physical activity. I know basketball does happen in the gym quite often. My, my kids like cross country. They run out through the woods, out towards the high school. This year, now that we have a track, the kids, the coaches work together. The, with the high school coach who came over and ran on the track. So I think athletics and getting out there and doing those type of activities is important. Thank you.
Depending on how fast you answer this question, this may be the last question for you here. Pleasant statements. And it is, we live in a digital, electronic world. What are your concerns regarding information technology and the impact of our children as it is currently available in our school system? And Greg, this?
So I will try to fit this all in one minute. So as someone who did a law of technology for the army, I was on with a group that DOG went out and we analyzed school units. We have to have a robust IT. This school has had a ransomware attack. During that ransomware attack, we had 20-year-old servers, staff using very old software, outdated antivirus across the district. Now, I'm just not making all this stuff up. You can actually read this in the assessment that Mr. Grant had the company come to do. So we have to do better with technology. There are too many bullies, cyber stuff out there that will go after kids real easy. So we have to protect them and we have to have a robust and safe network. Thank you.
Stephanie?
Could you repeat the question again? I may have misunderstood it. I thought you were referencing technology devices and the impact to our kids for education.
We live in a digital, electronic world. What are your concerns regarding information technology and the impact on our children as it is currently available in our school system?
So I was gonna approach it from the angle of devices being within the classrooms and accessibility to what students have. We heard from each one of our administrators that it's a concern that students are on their devices and it's impacting learning. So I have a great concern. I also know at PADS, I also know at PADS, they're using iPads, right? Guess what? There's some students that don't have access to an iPad at home, so they're not as familiar with utilizing that technology. So I think it's important to make sure that all of our students have access to know how to use the technology that they have. And I think it's important for us to monitor what they have access to and make sure that we're also teaching the old school way too, to learn how to make better.
Regina.
I think that we both definitely live in a technological world and we need to make sure moving forward that we're doing the right thing for our technology department to keep the technology that we do have safe so that we as parents can trust it and not have to fear that. And I am hoping we're moving in the right direction. I think that in this world, we've got to be in the cutting edge of giving all of the access we can to our children because this is the world we live in and the world that they're entering. I also think it would be great if there was some way we could set up something to help parents because I know I could use it as far as helping to be able to keep the kids safe at home because it's changing all the time. And I think it'd be helpful so, you know, parents at home can know and be educated too because a lot of us are, you know, more old school and we also don't know how to keep them safe at home. It changes all the time. So yeah, thank you.
Can I answer this slow enough? This is the last question. So with artificial intelligence, I wouldn't have used the pumpkin way, no encyclopedias back when I was in school to do my reports and stuff. So I think that's great. But I think the kids need to use all the technology they can get their hands on. And if we could go back to one of my earlier answers, kids that don't know what they want to do in life, they ought to make sure they're in IT somehow because that's going to last forever.
Stephanie, let's start with you. What is your opinion of the standardized test results for Herman? Should they be better? So how could the results be improved? Is it the hiring process, teaching methods, recognition, compensation or other?
I think now that we have the full-time curriculum coordinator, that's really going to be key. I know that she's added additional information to our packet in the June committee and she's going to speak further in July. I think really utilizing our curriculum coordinator is going to be key. Those scores can be tricky, especially in high school. I have one student that takes them very, very seriously and then one of my children buzzed right through and did it about as quick as possible. So I think it can be hard at certain ages to really gauge the accuracy of those reports. But there's lots of opportunity for us to improve. There's been no questions about that and it's time for us to get back and focus on the curriculum and the education of our students. That's what we're all here for and that's what the number one main focus needs to be moving forward. So I have great concerns over the scores and I look forward to coming up with solutions to move forward.
Tony.
Yeah, I'm just taking a wild guess, but I'm assuming COVID had a little catch-up on this to, to work into the system we're in now. But I think we need to do everything possible to improve the scores, but we also need to do everything possible to make our kids smarter. And if their score test isn't as accurate or as good as what we'd like, as long as the kids are getting the right education, they'll do just fine.
I think that our test scores are concerning and you can look back over the last 30 years where it means test scores were some of the top of the nation until recently. We're on the bottom and that's concerning. But again, it goes back to kind of the first question. We need to figure out why. And is that because the teachers are just, don't have the time to focus to teach the kids in the classroom because of all the other issues they're dealing with in the classroom? So one of the solutions is we've got to figure out really why that is and what we can do to let the teachers focus on teaching the kids. And is there some other ways that we could maybe measure within our own school outside of the standardized testing that just comes down to funding from the school? Could we somehow come up with a solution to monitor our Herman kids and how they're performing in the classroom?
Greg.
So like when I went through school, I did testing on a piece of paper, filled in boxes, read it, wrote out something. I'm not sure if everyone knows, but kids do their standardized testing on laptops now. That's the way it is. So we've got to make sure those devices are working, the network's working properly to make sure there aren't issues when dealing with that. The other problem is, is the state. The state keeps changing the standard, saying, hey, you can't compare this test that we just did in the, that we did in the spring to the fall one. They're different now. And that makes it really difficult for teachers to focus on where the improvements were, where the, where we need to work on making things better. I think Mr. Freeman has done a really good job on bringing another program in that they can get the results right away and not have to wait six months for the state to get the results. Thank you.
I still have a pile of questions that we didn't get to. I'm sorry that I am delighted that people have this many questions for the school. School committee members, please ask questions to the individual candidates and please go out and vote. But now we have two minutes for each candidate to give their closing statement. Maybe we'll go in the order that we started, Tony.
One thing, I just got my memory jogged and I spent a lot of time with the main learning results back in the day. We spent, I don't know, at least 50 meetings on this for the state and then the state eventually dropped it. So Greg's right, the state needs to get their act together when it comes to that stuff. But my closing statement actually is, please vote for me and I'll do the best thing I can for the kids in this town and Carmel-Levant and surrounding towns that also vote. Thank you.
All there are. Thank you. Greg.
Yeah, so thank you for all coming out. I appreciate it. Thank you for the questions. Some of them were really difficult, but difficult questions are good to hear and gets people thinking. One of the things I wanted to hopefully get in and wasn't able to is I would really like to see us hire a technology integration specialist to help the teachers specifically work with technology and building lesson plans. Because again, everyone knows that if your computer at work goes down, everything comes to brim and halt. And we need to have a specialist in here to help teachers build those lesson plans into technology and use it really well. I've been going to all the meetings for the past few years, even the subcommittee meetings. I've been actively involved in schools and I hope when it comes to voting day that you'll consider me. Thank you.
Regina.
Thank you, the legal voters for hosting this event tonight. Thank you guys all for coming. I think it's a great opportunity for you guys to get to know us a little bit better. My door is open. You can call me. I am willing to have any type of conversation you want to have. I'm not afraid of the hard questions. And yes, it is okay. We don't always have to agree, but we've got to start listening and respecting each other's opinions and coming together and working together. I think with this town, to move forward and feel, it's going to take some really good communication and a fresh start. And I'm a very honest person and your vote and me, you can trust. I'm not going to change. I'm going to fight hard and advocate for those people that need their voices heard and that includes community members and staff and teachers. I just hope you all go out and vote on June 11.
Our town needs proven leaders. I've proven that over the last three years. I have a history of that. I'm 100% there for the education of the kids, there's no question. If I wasn't there for the education for the kids, I would be volunteering countless hours doing it. That's what we're all there for. We need to have a unified vision amongst all three schools. Each school has one vision. How about if we collaborate together and get a unified vision? We need to collaborate with the town. Having the town be part of the budget process has been crucial. Those are the steps that we need to make to be able to collaborate, go forward. Our town needs stability. This election is important for our town. I think it's very important to have somebody that supports the students, administration, parents is, is willing to listen when people come with problems and look to solve those problems. Collaboration is going to be key. We don't need to have personal agendas. At the end of the day, none of us have all the answers. None of us are perfect. And I welcome ideas from other committee members. So at the end of the day, we need somebody to prove in leadership and stability. That's what our town needs to continue to move forward. We've made a lot of, a lot of progress and it's not an opportunity to step back, it's an opportunity to continue to move forward.
Thank you very much. Schools are important. Education is important. Teachers are important and students are our future and we need them to be educated. Please vote on June.